I'm good, you? Before we start, I just had a question. We were going to be making dinner reservations in Wawa for 6:30, so we were just wondering, do you think any of you would be there in time for dinner?
Is that what, 13?
Yeah, Sunday night, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. No? Sounds good. Yeah, for 6:30, yeah. Okay, sounds good. Oh, yeah, sure, okay.
I know you want to be on the seat.
Yeah. They go through them so quickly. Are your mics on? Dave, is your mic on? You have to hold it down. Mike, I don't know if yours is on, you have to hold the button down.
I turned it on, yeah.
Oh, okay, there's a green light on the top?
Yes, I'd like to call this meeting to order and thank everybody for being here tonight. A move by Counsel Hugh, second, by Counsel Moffett, resolve that the regular meeting commence at the hour of 7:00 PM, and be it further resolved that counsel acknowledges that we are meeting in the Robinsons Superior Treaty area on lands that have been traditionally used by several indigenous nations, but we would like to pay special recognition to our closest indigenous neighbors, the communities of Bitigon, Nashua and Outback, and Pik, Moberg First Nations. We wish to recognize the long history of the First Nations and many people in our region specifically, and show respect to them today. All in favor. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll ask for disclosure of pecuniary interest and general nature thereof. Seeing none, we move with the approval of the agenda. Move by Counsel Houston, second, by Counsel Arola, resolve that the agenda be approved and circulate. All in favor. There are no delegations, but we move on to the adoption of the minutes of the previous meeting. Move by Counsel Houston, second, by Counsel Moffett, resolve that the minutes of the regular meeting held on December 5th, 2018 are adopted and circulated. All in favor. Move by Counsel Moffett, second, by Counsel Arola, resolve that the minutes of the special meeting held on December 10th, 2018 are adopted and circulated. All in favor. Move by Counsel Moffett, second, by Counsel Arola, resolve that the minutes of the regular meeting held on December 12th, 2018 are adopted and circulated. All in favor. There are no petitions, so we move to dispersments. Move by Counsel Arola, second, by Counsel Houston, resolve the dispersment sheet number 2018-20, $579,767.15, as provided to counsel for information purposes only. All in favor. Move by Counsel Moffett, second, by Counsel Houston, resolve the dispersment sheet number 2019-01, $68,961.17, and seven cents, as provided to counsel for information purposes only. All in favor. Move by Counsel Houston, second, by Counsel Arola, resolve that the agenda items numbers 0901 and 0902 be received, and be it further resolved, first of all, is there, either those have to be moved forward for?
For what?
Do we want to move them for discussion? Under who visits, or are they filed the way they are?
Maybe just ask Kathy Hudson.
What? Why are you asking?
Mrs. Hudson?
What is, what is it you're asking?
I'm asking, we have two, two letters of correspondence on here.
Oh, okay.
Do we want to just approve them?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Move by Counsel Hudson, second, by Counsel Arola, resolve that the correspondence 0901 and 0902 be received and filed. All in favor. Move by Counsel Moffett, second, by Counsel Arola, resolve that the minutes of meetings of the Northwestern Ontario Municipal Association Board held September 18, 2018 be accepted and received. All in favor. Move by Counsel Hudson, second, by Counsel Moffett, resolve that the minutes of the meetings of the Manitowage Public Library Board held on November 13, 2018 be accepted as received. All in favor. The next item is a verbal update by the mayor. I went to a meeting in, in Wawa yesterday of the mayors of the east, eastern superior mayor's group, and there were, there were several items discussed, but one of the, one of the main things that really upset me was the, Wawa was hit by one of those ransomware problems. They were shut down, they lost their data for over a week, almost two weeks, and they were asked to pay a fee to get the key to open it up again. So, the amount that they ended up paying, I understand, wasn't very high for the actual fee, but they had to engage a law firm, and they had to engage a security expert to actually help them get all their dat, get the data back and get it opened, and make sure they got back to work. So, they, they had about a week that they didn't have any data, couldn't do anything. What was learned by that, number one, is that we have to be really, really careful that we have the right security for our township, and number two, that we have the proper cyber insurance in case we do have a problem, because, you know, they were lucky that their, their total amount was probably under $60,000, but there've been communities that were $300,000, $400,000, so we need that insurance. And the other thing that came out of that meeting was that, that all of the six communities were going to end up getting a, a training group together that will give training to all our councils for every municipality, and also for the staff and the stuff. So, it was an interesting meeting.
Do we have insurance then?
That, we'll have to look at that. I don't, I don't think, because I don't think any of the communities have cyber insurance.
So, is this due to a hacker?
Yes, they don't know where it was. This happens quite often. It happened in hospitals a few years ago, a couple of years ago, they, they hit a lot of the hospitals, and you have no choice, you pay the ransom, but you don't get back up.
Would it be an idea to have communities band together? It might be better insurance that way?
Well, we, we are looking at the training for all the communities on the east side, here's east mayor's communities from Shepulow to here, and we will have training, and, you know, we can discuss then what we think would help, but we will be looking at cyber insurance for sure. There will be no verbal update from, you know, CEO, just his way of saying. Move by Counsel Hudson, second, by Counsel Stefano, that being a bylaw to authorize a temporary borrowing of $1 million to be read a first and second time. All in favor. Move by Counsel Arola, second, by Counsel Moffett, being a bylaw to provide an interim tax levy for the township for the year 2019 to be read a first and second time, and further be read a third time, passed and numbered as bylaw number 2019-. All in favor. Move by Counsel Hudson, second, by Counsel Moffett, being a bylaw to establish 2019 service fees and charges to be read a first and second time. Do we have any discussions on that? This is, these are our annual fees that we charge, and basically...
No, I took a look at them, and the majority of them are status quo, no changes?
Yeah.
And the ones that...
Yeah, a couple minor changes.
Are minor changes, and the one major change, everything looks fine.
Yeah, I agree.
Everybody happy with that?
Yeah, I, I love that.
Okay, fine. And be it further, and furthermore, be read a third time, passed and numbered as bylaw number 2019-03. All in favor. The next item is an administration report, TR 2019-01, submitted by Margaret Hartling, CAO clerk, treasurer regarding Ontario Municipal Partnership Funding, the UN Fund, dated January 2nd, 2019. Move by Counsel Arola, second, by Counsel Moffett, be resolved that counsel is receipt of administration report, TR 2019-01, submitted by Margaret Hartling, CAO clerk, treasurer regarding Ontario Municipal Partnership Funding, as provided to counsel for information purposes only. All in favor. Move by Counsel Moffett, second, by Counsel Arola, resolve that counsel is receipt of administration report, TR 2019-02, submitted by Margaret Hartling, CAO clerk, treasurer regarding appointment of auditors, and be further resolved that upon conclusion of council review and consideration, direct staff to do as follows, and have we discussed that?
I read the report, and it's been the same auditors for 30 years.
Happy with the audit?
Yes.
Counsel approved Grant Thornton, LLP, be appointed as municipal auditors for the year, and end audits of 2018, 2020. All in favor. Move by Counsel Moffett, second, by Counsel Houston, resolve that counsel is receipt of administration report, Admin 2019-01, submitted by Margaret Hartling, CAO clerk, treasurer regarding post-election accessibility report, as provided to counsel for information purposes only. All in favor. Move by Counsel Moffett, second, by Counsel Arola, resolve that counsel is receipt of administration report, Admin 2019-02, submitted by Duslan Keo, deputy clerk, regarding taxi cab license fees, and be it further resolved that upon conclusion of council review and consideration, be directed staff as follows, so that we...
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, back at the beginning of last year, we received a request from Gourds Taxi, asking council at the time to look at the fare rates that were in place at the time. So, council did approve that. Subsequently, they received another request back in July, asking that the licensing fees look at being adjusted. It was a recommendation at the time to bring it back to council when they looked at the fees and charges that are done at the end of the year. We ended up, after reviewing the request, looking to the Act for legislation, we, we are legislated through the Act to be able to establish rates and fares for taxis under section 156. However, looking further in the Act, section 106 states that we cannot bonus a business. So, looking at those two statutes and the requests that we received, we determined that it would be a bonusing to adjust the fares and adjust the rates. So, it's our recommendation to not accept the request at this time, but it's up to council to decide what they would like to be moving forward.
Have we looked at what the fares would be in other areas, in other communities, our sides?
Yes, in the attachment to the report, we had looked at, let me just grab this here, The owner of Gourds Taxi, Mr. Brooks, he had provided to us Marathon and Wawa's rates, and they are different. They are, the first vehicle, Manitowage, we charge $125, Marathon is $122.50, and Wawa's $60. Second vehicle for Manitowage is $250, Marathon $122.50, Wawa's $30. Third vehicle, and so forth, is $375 for Manitowage, Marathon is $122.50, and Wawa's $30. So, there are different differences between the municipalities. However, we don't charge business fees, we don't have that licensing here in place in Manitowage, where the other municipalities do.
How much are they, business fees?
The business fees? In my previous report, I don't, we'll probably, I'll put that in. I don't have that information on hand, but I did, in researching the other municipalities, they fluctuate too, they're, they're all different, so I would have to look back and bring that information back to you.
Through the chair. The one part that, well, I, I noticed the fees, they go up gradual per vehicle. Is it fair, is it not? I don't know, but they have been the same for, is it 30 years?
Yes.
Yes. Now, the only part that I found to be, I would say unfair, is the point that Mr. Brooks brought up about adding a third vehicle in the month of December, having to pay the full annual fee. Now, I myself think that should either be prorated to the, the amount of the year that's left, or start it from that date to be a full year. That's the only, my only concern that I found in the letter, because, you know, by rights, Christmas parties and Christmas season, if he needs to put an extra vehicle on, I don't think he should be penalized to pay the full amount for a third vehicle, for one month's use in the calendar year. That's my thoughts.
I would agree with that.
And I would agree, it should be prorated to how long that taxi is operating in the given, in a year.
Change pair.
Through the chair, also, I noticed the one part that it said, if they wanted a vehicle for a 72, 72-hour period, it was a $25 fee or something like that?
Yes, it's a special term.
That's right. I mean, that could also be used, but I'm thinking it would be fair to prorate. They may be something we could change in the bylaw going forward?
How difficult would that be to change?
Well, currently, through the chair, the bylaw is being reviewed, reviewed for taxi licensing and regulation. Currently, the fares and are, or, not the fares, sorry, the licensing fees are in our fees and services bylaw, so I think we would just need to bring that back to the CAO clerk treasurer to adjust.
Good. So, should that, that be moved to the next meeting, or?
Move by that.
Okay.
Just, I, I just, just to be clear, are we just bringing it back to the CAO clerk treasurer to review, or to prorate a third?
To review and recommend whether to prorate.
Recommend whether to prorate?
Yeah. I think it's, I think the question is, how big a job is it to administer the prorate?
You think maybe we should defer the...
Why don't we do it?
Maybe defer the item on the agenda to the next meeting, and then that way the CAO clerk treasurer would have a chance to review it and...
Once we get clarification on how it can be done, and then we can bring it up for a vote at the next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Move by Counsel Arola, second, by Counsel Moffett, resolve that counsel is receipt of administration report, FBA 2019-01, submitted by Owen Granting, CBCO Municipal Planning Manager, regarding retail cannabis store option to opt out. Be it further resolved that council direct township staff to notify the AGCO that the township manager will allow cannabis retail stores to be township, and be it further resolved that council direct township staff to prepare the following. Now, have we discussed it? Do you want to discuss it?
Isn't that a presentation by Owen?
Oh, it's not really a presentation, certainly more than welcome to take your questions on the report, or add some more to it if you'd like. There's a lot of information around this particular topic, and we have to decide before the 22nd of January. That's the, the only option we have, date we have, is to decide by then to opt in or opt out. As I alluded to in my report, personally, I think it's a moot point, you're going to be able to buy it online from a government agency, very similar to the liquor store, but it would be a cannabis division, so it'll be readily available, so I think it's better that we opt in, and then have the option of controlling it through our zoning bylaw of where those stores would be. And as I mentioned in the report, C1 is our downtown core where our retail stores are, and that's where retail activity would be permitted.
Through the chair, I totally agree. I think any, if, if we were to opt out, we would lose a lot of tax money, from what I've read, so to opt in, I mean, if it means another business opening up in town and creating more jobs, by all means. So, I say we opt in.
Yeah, it's fairly onerous application process, and fairly expensive, but if someone chooses to go that way, and we don't prepare for that, then we'll have an issue later on. There's also other components to the recommendation. One of them is, is that, and this was from AMO, recommend that each municipality appoint a person to be the front person, if there is applications, so in the report, we recommend that that be the clerk, so that data gets, information gets flowed to the community, and then put out to the proper managers that need to be involved or comment on it. And as well, there is options for council to restrict where the activity may be conducted. So, for instance, if there's a community event in the park, maybe that day you don't want to have that activity, so you can have a bylaw put in place ahead of time to say when that's permitted. There is quite a bit of restriction already. We were concerned about recreation facilities, you know, say the playgrounds and stuff, but through the Smoke Free Ontario legislation, which Jolene, I believe, emailed council and linked today, we don't need to have all that discussion tonight, but we will be coming back in the future to council with other topics on this issue, and other, other reports, and that will be information that will be helpful to council for those, for those items. There is quite a bit of reading out there.
Are there any thoughts on, on the smoke free part of the bylaw? Are we okay?
Yeah.
Okay. And be it further resolved that council direct township staff to prepare the following: municipal cannabis retail policy, and identify the clerk as a key staff member to coordinate municipal input, and two, a smoke vapor-free bylaw to regulate where on public property and municipal facilities cannabis may not be consumed. All in favor. Thank you. Move by Counsel Moffett, second, by Counsel Arola, resolve that council is receipt of administration report, TW 2019-02, submitted by Randy Barnes, Public Works Superintendent, regarding recreation center heating system, and be it further resolved that upon conclusion of council review and consideration, be directed staff as follows. Mr. Barnes?
Good evening. Counsel, counsel has seen my report. The 2018 budget for the recreation center, there was provisions to replace the heating system for, I guess, a couple of reasons, and one including engineering time, the project wasn't completed. Over the last 10 days, we've been running on a broken system. One of the boilers quit last winter over the, over the last heating season. We've been running on one for close to about nine, 10 months now. The last nine, 10 days, we've had to manually reset the, run the existing boiler about every three or four hours. So, it's been quite onerous. We've had service technicians in from Wawa and Sault Ste. Marie a couple of times, trying to sort of limp it along, and it's becoming to the point where, as it's the only boiler we have in the recreation center, we need to get it addressed as soon as possible.
Is that the original heating system for that building?
No, that boiler, that boiler set that's in there presently was replaced about 27 years ago.
Any further questions? And be it further resolved that upon conclusion of council review and consideration, direct staff as follows, and one, council pre-approved the expenditure of $19,370.72 provided for in the 2019 budget for the recreation center heating system. All in favor.
Can I ask a question? I forget what I was supposed to say ahead of time.
Through the chair.
To the chair. Do we have the money? Do we have the money?
That's been, that's been pre-approved in the...
It was already budgeted for?
Yes.
In the 2018 budget, we were approved for the, for the replacement of the system. We're a little bit short on the money-wise. We've paid for the engineering costs for the heating system now. The balance of that budget is $71,629.28. Tonight, I'm requesting that council approve an additional $19,370.72 to be covered in the 2019 budget for this purpose.
Okay. Kim?
I'll ask the question again. Council pre-approved the expenditure of $19,370.72 provided for in the 2019 budget for the Recreation Centre Heating System, all in favor.
I apologize to the chair and to everybody. I didn't have time to read evidence. Sorry.
Moved by Councillor Arola, seconded by Councillor Moffat. It is resolved that council is in receipt of administration report, PW-2019-03, submitted by Randy Barnes, Public Works Superintendent regarding administration building boilers. And be it further resolved that upon conclusion of the council review and consideration, council direct staff as follows, and Mr. Barnes, you're on again.
I'm here again. While we're on the topic of heating boilers, the boilers in this building were replaced in 2013. At that time, administration chose to, to replace the boilers that were due to be replaced with a product, a manufacturer called a Beesman. Beesman's a European brand of boiler, and it's very sophisticated. One of the things we've found over the last few years is the Beesman boiler isn't designed to operate on, one, on a heavy mineral water. It's designed to run on a sealed glycol system that we do not have. The other problem with the Beesman boiler, as I said, is a rather sophisticated unit. There's not a lot of certified qualified service people in the region that can work on them. We've been struggling with these units basically since they were installed. Our heating contractor that we've been using over the last few years, the people that put the control system into this building, that we can manage the heating systems, Henderson Metals out of Sault Ste. Marie has done a commendable job in trying to keep these boilers functioning. Unfortunately, they were practically designed to be running on natural gas and not propane, so they've been modified to run on propane as a different operating pressures on the fuel system. We've had multiple service technicians over the last few years work on these, trying to keep them functioning properly, and they've all basically told us the same thing. You're not using these boilers for what they intended to be used, and they'll never going to work right. You're going to constantly be maintaining them and repairing them. So, I've taken this opportunity to talk to Henderson, who is our heating contractor, and asked them, at the time that they're here installing the boilers at the Recreation Centre, is it cost advantageous to us to do the, to replace the boilers in this building at the same time? And they told us most certainly it would be. They would basically install the boilers for the cost of the boilers. Their technicians are already going to be here, and to switch product A to product B is going to be fairly easy on the, on the, on the actual installation site, so I'm recommending that we do that at this time. That would make all the boilers we have in our municipal buildings the same model and the same make. It eliminates carrying multiple parts for repair and maintenance, and they're the product that is recommended and carried by our service provider.
Any questions?
Through the chair, that would be an additional cost of how much?
To replace both boilers in this building, to put them the same product as going in the Recreation Centre, is $39,990.66.
Okay, and also, would they be able to convert to natural gas if the natural gas system does come here?
Completely convertible, yes.
Which would save us...
Absolutely.
Through the chair, they will be running on the propane that already exists here?
Correct, yes.
At the Rec Center as well?
The ones at the Rec Center, the boilers we have presently at the Rec Center are furnace oil, so we're going to have to add a second tank to the Recreation Centre and dig a trench and put in a new line. So, the funding that we talked about here will include that.
Okay.
Any further questions? The funding for this, the $39,990, will come out of reserves, right?
Correct. Out of the infrastructure?
Yeah, a lot of position and renewal of reserve money.
Be no further questions, I'll call up next week again. And be it further resolved that upon completion, conclusion of council review and consideration, direct staff as follows: council approved replacing a municipal building boilers using the same brand and style as the Recreation Centre for $39,990.66 to be funded from reserves, all in favor. Moved by Councillor Arola, seconded by Councillor Moffat. It is resolved that the regular meeting adjourned at the hour of 7:35. 7:35, all in favor.